Mr. Shee?
Here.
Ms. Aronoff?
Here.
Mrs. Maroni?
Here.
Mr. Brescher?
Here.
Mrs. Patel?
Here.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Dr. Chen?
Here.
Over to Mrs. Ward and Mrs. Pang.
Opening statement, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted in the Board of Education Administrative Offices. Copies of the notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on September 24th, 2019. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with bylaws and applicable state regulations. As you know, this is a special meeting. You know, we're going to start the superintendent's search process. It's one more step getting to the end. So with that said, we're open for board member comments. Any board members? Yes?
I have a statement that I'd like to make.
Mr. Mike.
Hello?
When I made the decision to run for a position on the Board of Education, I knew there would be times when I might have to recuse myself from voting. I have relatives who are on the Board of Education as employees. None are immediate family, and none live with me. If there ever came a time when those employees were to be discussed, I would definitely have to recuse myself from any voting. Knowing this, I moved forward and ran for a position on the Board. Once elected, a Board requirement is to attend governance workshops to learn all the rules and regulations for the Board of Education. When I attended, I learned that the relative rules are much more expansive. Although I was not happy with this, I knew I needed to follow the rules, and I would never, ever consider myself to be unethical. I then heard and saw an article that the rules for Board members and their relative conflict had been lightened. Yet, I have been researching the new rules and have found only conflicting opinions at this time. I have spoken to the two Board member attorneys numerous times and have not gotten the same concrete response from either. Mr. Rivera's final advice as of this morning still remains that I should recuse myself from voting for one of the most important decisions that a Board member can make. I know that there are a multitude of decisions that I can be involved with, but I feel that this decision to exclude me from the hiring of a permanent superintendent is very frustrating. I find it frustrating because I have been watching our district struggle with important decisions due to the lack of a permanent superintendent and conflicting advice from attorneys. We have an important decision coming up for the district to pass a referendum to enable our schools to accommodate the rising population in our schools. I know that the temporary one interim, one acting superintendent that we have now are very competent, but we absolutely need the consistency of one leader. I can only hope that the Board members will move forward and hire a permanent superintendent who will bring our district the stability it truly needs and the insight to bring our district on a continuing path of excellence. Remember, Edison expects nothing but excellence.
Okay, thank you.
Knowing this, I will proceed to be a part of this Board. Thank you.
Yeah. Question. Do we need to vote on this or make a motion, or is this up to Mrs. Conway and her decision?
So, I've spoken to Ms. Conway about this and to other Board members where this issue has come up and in the past dealt with it. Under the current state of the law, which comes from the Ethics Commission, a Board member would violate the Act if he or she who had an immediate family member or relative in the district were to participate in the search or hiring of the superintendent. That also applies to post-employment decisions or around the superintendent. So, I would not recommend that a Board member who has a family member in the district that meets these requirements participate in the search or the hiring, as that would create a conflict for that Board member and a potential ethics violation. I also would not recommend that the Board put forth any motion to do that as well, because that could lead to other Board members being impacted by such a decision.
Mr. Rivera, I've done quite a bit of research, and what you've just stated was only 50% of the time. That's my biggest conflict, because if you turn the page, the definition of relatives or family that holds me back is an immediate family member or someone living with me that I'm related to, and neither has that case been shown. And I just don't understand, and this is why I'm putting up such a stink, because no one has ever gotten it straight. I can talk to two people and I do not get the same answer. And being elected to this Board by over 11,000 people, I need to make you understand, I feel it's my duty to follow through on one of the most important items that I have been elected to do. And I'm sorry, both you and your partner have disagreed. So, I feel it's my responsibility that I do not sit back when even the two of you cannot agree.
So, I thought about our conversation today, and if the Board is amenable, the Board can authorize me and the firm on behalf of the Board to seek an advisory opinion. That's an opinion where the Board asks the school Ethics Commission the question, is this a conflict? And lays out the specific facts as to your potential conflict and asks the Ethics Commission to rule. We can ask on an expedited basis to get an answer as quickly as possible, and then that will enable this Board to know the answer definitively as to whether or not there is a conflict that would prohibit you from participating. If you choose to participate, look, my job, I can't stop anyone from doing anything, but I just want the full Board to know that this is, in my opinion, would be an ethical violation. I would not recommend it to you, and I would not recommend it to any other member on the Board to participate with the conflict as I understand it to be. You've informed me that you have relatives that work in the district. Those relatives are, I believe, a son-in-law, your daughter?
Not my daughter, no.
Your son-in-law?
Mm-hmm.
And there are other members that are family members that are, as well. That meets the definition as defined in the law that I understand it to be from reviewing the Administrative Code as well as 18A.
But now-
But if their Board wants to know definitively from the Ethics Commission before any act is taken, we can seek an advisory opinion and ask for that on an expedited basis.
No offense, Mr. Rivera, I asked for this months ago, that I needed a definitive answer. At that point in time, I would have gone with that decision, but I never got that. And when I spoke to your partner and I asked her for it, she got back to me and said, yes, you can vote. I have already voted on items. So I don't understand what the underlying thought is, why can't I do it this time when I was able to make other supervisory decisions prior to this? Now you're telling me, now you're going to look into it? By the time we get an answer, the thought pattern of what's going on right now will be over and done with. I would never want to do anything illegal, but if I'm getting pushed around and not given a straight answer, then you can take your time and ask, but I am going to proceed until you give me something in writing from whomever that agrees with the person sitting next to them, that I cannot do this.
Well, let me, can I ask you a question? What happens if she partakes? That would be a potential ethics violation against her. To be honest with you, if you get an ethics violation, well, they slap your hand and they tell you you shouldn't have done it, is where I kind of go with it. But let me tell you what I can't do right now. What I can't do is think that you're going to go to get a ruling for her, that you're going to expedite, because there is no time in expediting for us to take a vote on a superintendent at this time. So, at that point, I would propose a motion that we would vote on our superintendent. Well, you were waiting for her answer, because I'm not going to leave this Board and then not have an opportunity to do this. I had nothing, I didn't partake. If Elizabeth wanted to get a ruling, she could have done a ruling, you could have applied, you could have went to school boards-
I asked our lawyer to take care of it. Isn't that his job?
Right, but you could- When we had our last lawyer, and you can check with our last lawyer, I have checked myself with school boards and their attorneys myself. I had checked myself with an outside firm for my own self. So I went to outside counsel when I felt that I wasn't getting the counsel I was supposed to get.
Well, Mr. Brescher, I was told by Mr. Shee to call the School Boards Association and talk to them for my answer. So I did, and when I finally asked, then which lawyer do I listen to? And she said, well, what did your lawyer say? And I told her, and her response to me was, if your lawyer said you could vote, then you can vote. What am I supposed to think?
So, on the prior vote, which I wasn't here for, which Hope Blackburn gave the advice, that was for the acting superintendent position that Margaret Cantoli holds now. My understanding at the time was there was a concern about whether or not there was going to be sufficient number of votes that day, which may not have turned out to be the case. I'm telling you definitively, and I'm not ambiguous in this at all, I believe you have an absolute conflict, and you should not be participating in the superintendent's search or interviews. It's not clear, there's no ambiguity in my interpreting it and reading exactly what this case says. You have a son-in-law that's in the district that's covered by the immediate family.
No, it wasn't. That's under relative.
Under NJAC 6A:23A-1.2, it spells out aunt, uncle, niece, nephew, grandparents, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, stepparent, stepchild, and lists those folks as immediate family or relatives.
Relatives. There is definitely a difference.
But in the case that I just cited, it mentions immediate family members are relatives. If you have a relative in the district, it states you should not participate in the superintendent's search at all. So, that is clear. The only reason why I brought up the advisory issue was that if this Board wants a decision specific to Edison, in this case, we could ask, but I do not believe that there will be any way that they will say you may participate in this process, given your family member in the district. I did send you the decision that explained this conflict as well as the conflict around participating in negotiations in August, when this issue came up around participating in the Security Committee. I said, and explained this issue, that you can't participate in superintendent's search as well as negotiations. You didn't, I didn't get any questions back, so I thought it was fully understood that you-
That was at the time when Hope Blackwell was in attendance, and she got back to me and told me to the contrary.
I just wanted to address, you said that I did explain it to you, and the issue with Hope, I wasn't here, I certainly were at the same firm, but just to be definitive and clear today, there's no ambiguity on my part with respect to your conflict. I've dealt with this issue numerous times for many Boards that we represent, and it's always the same answer. If you have a relative that meets the definition, it is indeed a conflict, and you are prohibited from participating in the superintendent's search.
Okay. Any other Board member comments? See now, we open up for public comments.
Oh, because I'll stand up. I don't know how I was nominated. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan Wilder. I have a huge problem. Can everybody hear me?
Address, please. Address, please, for the record. Address, please, for the record.
9 Douglas Drive, Edison, New Jersey, 08817. I don't know where you're from. Anyway, my problem is with the busing. For four years, this is the fourth year my daughter is going to East Brunswick Votech, and every year, the bus doesn't bring her to the first day of school. Why? Because it doesn't show up. Or, if it does show up, it shows up an hour late. I get it, first day of school, sometimes things don't work right. Bus companies don't know what they're doing. It's plain and simple. They demonstrate that every day of the week. You can't get a straight answer from anybody at the bus company every year, regardless of which bus company it is. It's deplorable. This year, the bus failed to show up on several occasions, and on several occasions, when bringing my child home, the bus wasn't there. Really very simple. 3:30 she comes out, all these other buses are lined up, no bus there. Okay, it's running a few minutes late, you call the bus company, they say, no, the bus is there. I said, the bus is not there. There are 10 children waiting outside the school, according to my daughter, 10 children or better, waiting outside the school with administration standing there, looking for the bus. The bus is not there. The individual at the bus company tells me, I see the bus on the GPS, it is there. I said, no, it's not. Meanwhile, I'm driving to pick up my daughter. Luckily, I'm in the area and I can. I get there at 4:05 in the afternoon, where I see my daughter and approximately 10 other children sitting on the grass, no other bus in sight. And I said, for giggles, I'll call the bus company and say, hey, my daughter's still waiting at the school, where is this bus? He says, the bus is there. I said, really? Well, here I am, standing in front of 10 children, administration for the school, and still no bus. So great, I pick up my daughter, I bring her home. Had I not been able to pick up my daughter, and let's say I was out of state, my daughter's old enough to let herself and stay by herself, she's now 17, I trust her, but let's just say there was no way for me to get her home from school. Do you think it's okay for my daughter or anybody's child to remain at the school for maybe two or three hours until I or anybody else was able to get to the school to bring them home? I mean, I'm sure everyone here has children, right? Or, maybe, maybe not. But would you want to leave your kid at school for an extra two or three hours until you could get to them and bring them home? That's one problem, and this has happened a couple times. The next thing is, is that they intermittently merge two buses together to bring my kid home. What does that really mean? That means that she's going to sit on the bus for two hours for a 20 to 30-minute ride. So an extra hour and a half she has to endure sitting on the bus. Anybody been on a school bus lately? Have any idea how comfortable it is? It's not. Imagine sitting on it for two hours. Would you like to sit on the bus for two hours? And, let's put another twist to that little story. Imagine, you know your kid gets home about 4:15, 4:20 from the bus. You schedule a doctor's appointment at 4:45, that you scheduled three months ago. Guess what happens? Because of this last-minute tobacco and your inability to get there in time to pick up your kid to bring them to the doctor's office, you blow that appointment. But that's not the best part, you've got to pay for it still, because you missed the doctor's appointment with a specialist. Nobody cares, nobody returns phone calls, and there is no fix. Now, I've had many conversations with Mr. Brescher, and that's just the tip of the iceberg of incidents that I've personally had. Now, I know that there are other parents here that have experienced very similar issues, and I'm sure their story is just as heartfelt and disturbing as well, where you leave your kid at the school bus stop to get to school, and no bus shows up, and they arrive late to school. Why? There is no reason for this. 60% of my property tax goes to the Board of Educate, you know, to school in general. And then you guys put it out to bid to all these different school bus companies to provide service for the residents of Edison. The taxpayers, the people that nominated every individual, not only here, but on the Board of, you know, whatever, for the town. You are our people. You're supposed to represent us and take care of us. Somehow, I feel that even though you may care, the bus companies don't care about the safety and the well-being of our children. And I fail to see where I have to stop my day. I fail to see where I have to stop my day to pick up where somebody else can fail at their job and there are no repercussions. I find it very unfair. And yet, this has been going on for over a month, and I have left phone call after phone call, sent emails and so forth to the Department of Transportation, you know, to your Transportation Division here in Edison, and I have yet to get a phone call back. I find it insulting that I don't get a phone call back. I find it even worse that the bus companies don't care, and nobody's doing anything about this to make this work. Now, if I've spoken to Mr. Brescher and indicated that I'd be with my logistics experience for over 31 years, I'm only too happy to share the responsibility and make this happen, where I see a lot of problems and holes in your system. But-
Thank you.
I don't know.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I hope to see something change.
Anything you want to respond, or you want to wait till everybody's- I got similar, it's a similar issue, yeah. Anybody else?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nikhil Avasti, Free Colonial Court, Edison, New Jersey, 08820. Thank you for the opportunity, but I have the same concern. I have two daughters, one goes to Edison School, STEM School. We are suffering from almost day one. For the last 30 days, she has not been able to get to the school first class on time. So she is missing every single day, and that's a very high-pressure school, as you all know. So, if you can do something about that, that will be good. So, in addition to the lateness, which is recurring every single day, I think everybody has the same concern here, I had another issue as well. One day, she was, she started getting bus. After two weeks, one day, bus stops at her stop, and she says that, well, we cannot board you today. And my daughter was alone there, waiting by the side of road. I said, why, what happened? Well, you're not in my list. What does that mean? I've been taking this bus every single day. What happened today? And here is my pass. Well, you're not in my bus. Sorry, I can't take you. And then bus moves off. She was left alone there. I was in the city, and my wife somewhere else. We were panicking. He came in time, he helped out, and somehow she was able to get to the school. But other than that, if he was not there, I don't know what would have happened. Next day, she was not even willing to take on that bus, because she was so traumatized with that experience, she felt like, well, I don't know whether I should, next day, I took a day off to stay there to ensure that she gets picked up on time. So this is the situation. And again, I'm not going to repeat and take your valuable time, but the problem we have is there is no accountability. We have no clarity who really owns the decision, where we should go for our concern. We have no idea. I don't know whether Board of Education or Transportation, we just have no idea. I don't know, anybody has any idea about that. So I think if you can solve the problem, that's wonderful. If you cannot solve the problem, at least give us a path, who can help us and guide with this situation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
These are two routes, though, right?
So, which route is this one? Which bus?
Mac-4.
Mac-4.
EB3.
EB, EB3?
I think it's EB3.
Yeah.
EV Victor?
EV.
My name is Rudra Singh.
I'm Sia Valani.
And we both ride Mac-4 every day to school. We both go to the Middlesex Engineering Academy, it's also STEM School, and every single day from the first day of school, the earliest that we've been is 20 minutes late, and it's gone to the point where we showed up an hour and a half late to school and missed the entire first block. And that's been happening every single day since the first day of school, so I keep on missing out Spanish class, and that's really important. And I don't know, cause you've been missing-
Yeah, so I missed part of health class once, so I didn't get some vital part of information. So the teacher had me redo an assignment while all my friends were out having fun for this thing. So I had to stay inside and do this assignment that I missed because I was late to class.
Every single day in Spanish, I keep missing information that I have to stay back after class to take notes on, and because of that, I end up missing more time in Biology, which is the class I have after that. And it messes up the entire schedule for the rest of the day, because I have to keep on making up the work that I missed for the first hour and a half. And this has been going on for the last month, and my parents have been continuously calling the school board trying to fix it, and nothing's been done about it so far.
So, it's-
It's just a problem.
So, as he said, I also just couldn't get on the bus once, because they said I wasn't on the list. I have a bus pass. I told I'm supposed to go on Mac-4, they just wouldn't let me on the bus. So I don't know if that's a problem, I don't know what that's a problem with, but I think that needs to be fixed, no matter what happened.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate you guys coming over and letting us know the issue. Anybody else?
Carol Badowski, 39, Jonathan Drive. That issue with the buses is horrifying to me, that our students are being subjected to that. But, what I wanted to just clarify, when you're discussing the Board's nepotism policy or the School Boards Association policy, I just wanted to clarify, Mrs. Conway is not allowed to vote because she has immediate family, or is it just any relative?
It's described as a relative in the district.
Okay. So that means anyone in any way related to you?
Well, in the definition, it lists numerous examples of what a relative is-
Right, in the Board policy, you say, parent, child, sibling, aunt, uncle, niece, nephew, grandparent, grandchild, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, stepparent, stepchild, stepbrother, stepsister, half-brother or half-sister, whether a relative is related to the individual or the individual's spouse by blood, marriage, or adoption. So relative is the key-
Yes.
-that you're working on. So a person-
And there are cases which even extended up to cousins, which aren't listed, but there are cases from the Ethics Commission that have found there to be a conflict when you have a cousin that works in the district.
Okay, because I misunderstood, because I kept hearing you say relative or immediate family, and a relative includes the immediate family usually.
It does, but the case, that I described word for word from the case that an immediate family member or relative in the district, I didn't write it, but they just made sure that in addition to immediate family member, which was longstanding the threshold, which was, you know, limited, they extended that when the accountability regs came out, and those accountability regs are under the New Jersey Administrative Code, under- New Jersey Administrative Code, under 6A, and extended that definition to include relatives, which are the relatives that you listed.
Okay, so any relative, basically, in that list. And the reason I, I'm asking is I am running for the Board of Education, and I have relatives that once worked in the district. I have relatives that have step, you know, adopted, whatever relatives. None of them work at the district that I know of, but I just wanted to know that this extends to practically anyone that's any relation to you.
Only what's listed.
Okay. Because I have people that fit those qual, qualifications that I've never even met. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, you want to address the bus issue? Oh, anybody else? Anybody else?
Close it.
Bus issues? Okay. So, see now, so if you guys can, yeah, anyone you want to address the bus issues? Any comments?
What can we, listen, I, I understand, I understand the whole, okay, yes, I'm sorry. I, I understand the issue that we have. Dan, we take care of all the busing for all of the satellite schools, I'm going to call them the academies of VOTECs. Could we pay them and have them take care of the busing?
If they have transportation available.
Well, because what I'm saying is, what I found was the problem in looking at all of this, and it's what, and these schools are going to be inherently a problem, they're always going to be a problem, they've always been a problem, is that they have a record of five students going there. We go out and we bid a route for five students. Come August, the school updates their list and gives us a list with 10 students. But now 10 students, you can't make the route and get there on time. So now, all, all the students are getting to school late, or they're not being picked, or they're getting home later, because we're cramming more kids on the bus to make it a route. If we made it the school's responsibility, you know, that would be up to them to take care of all the busing, because that notification to us comes in August, where I know that, like, if I was doing, I was from that school, I'd make sure my administration got it to me in April. You know what I mean? Or, or June. I mean, moving forward, I'm saying, but for right now, you told me in the back room that you were going to...
Right now, we have another, we have another, new driver, we're just waiting for some results for some of the tests that were done. Soon as we get that, that person will go on the agenda, and what my plan was, was to split up one of those routes, because right now, it's only 19 students on the route, but they're picked up all over town. We, we have 13,000 kids that go to school every day, we have 417 routes. We got evidently two or maybe three problem routes, and most of these are because we pick up the students at their houses, and it's all over town. So we're going to split it up, or try to split it up. And I did go out to the Ed Service Commission for a proposal for a second route, but the numbers came in so ridiculously high, I said, I'm not going to let them rob us. The first time it came in at $285 a day, that's $51,300 for the year, for, if I split up on 19 routes, it's nine or 10 kids for $51,000. That's over $5,000 a kid. The second time we went out, we said, we're rejecting that, go out again, it came out at $269 a day, which is $48,000 a route. Our average is about $30,000 to $35,000 a route for 54 kids. I can't pay somebody $48,000 to $50,000 for nine kids. So we're looking to do it in-house if we can. And that, as soon as I get those results back, we will put that on the agenda and hopefully be able to split the route.
Okay, but that, that's one driver you're going to hire now. These are, these are two routes. So is it, is it that that group's bigger, so you're going to give it to that group than that group? Because he...
Well, the one I heard was, was the STEM Academy is the one I heard that had 19 routes, and that's the one that's getting late every day? I have to check into the other one. I know, I'm not sure if, if, is it Durham bus that's your problem?
Yeah.
I think it's Durham, right? They have very few routes with us, and we already called them and told them we're going to pull our contract from them. Our only problem is we don't have anybody to replace them with, because all the other contractors are short drivers, too.
Excuse me if I may.
Just come to the mic.
Oh, sorry. I don't, I have one to one.
It is, just, just for the record.
I do apologize, but if I understand this correctly, Edison Township actually has buses. You just lack the drivers.
Yes.
Now, let's imagine this for a moment, let's speculate, that we went to the drivers that are working at this other bus company and say, hey, we got a, we got bus routes, we'll keep you employed all year round. It would be more economical to do that and obtain those drivers, or recruit from the, you know, create a course that say, hey, listen, we'll hire you and we'll put you through the course. You have all summer to get your CDL Class B to, in order to drive our buses that we already own. How cool would that be if you would provide some, some of these individuals who are qualified but just don't have that CDL Class B to drive your bus, with the fingerprints for the school bus, driver's license, and you would put that course together, and you would hire all your drivers, and you would never have a problem?
We actually tried. We, we had incentive programs, we had bonuses, we had everything throughout the summer. How many drivers did we get, Dan? Two. That's it. We actually offered to our current bus drivers a bonus to them, if they could find friends or family that obviously would be able to pass the background check and urine test and all that stuff.
Right.
We got two. Two. And we, we had to go through, jump through hoops, because, you know, we had to make sure we were doing it the correct way per contract and everything else. And there's just no drivers out there. I mean, I'm from another district, and we're short drivers there, too. I mean, I don't know why no one wants to drive a bus, maybe...
Are, are you aware of how rigorous the...
Test is. Oh, yes. Yeah, it's ridiculous that they need to know mechanics to be a driver.
Right, I know. It's a, it's almost a three-hour driving test.
Right. Where's the battery? Where's the break? Cam, it's just nuts. No, I agree.
I go through this on a regular basis, and I'm willing to assist.
Okay.
I'm willing to put my two cents in. I'm willing to help recruit, train, whatever it takes, improve the logistics, all this, to make it work. I'm willing to donate my time, even though my daughter's going to be out of the school system this year. I would like to help. This is my town, I was born and raised here, you know?
Okay, thank you. I got one more quick thing before I turn over the misdemeanor. The, the concern with the passes, if a student's issued a pass, how is the bus driver deny him, him or her access?
From what I heard about that was, they got a route list with all the names of their students on it, and she wasn't on it. And I, I related it to that bus company. I don't care if there's kids on the list or not. You take the kid home, then we'll worry about it. If she had a bus pass, there's absolutely no reason of why I did take, I did take her home.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I know Ralph just mentioned this, but I'm going to speak as a former vice principal of middle school and high school here in the district. I would have gone and picked her up myself if she were stranded out there, and I, I found out about it. That's outrageous. And I agree. Take the kid to school and worry about it tomorrow.
Right.
Unacceptable.
Dan, could we, could we have maybe Rich Benedict reach out to Mr. Willner?
Sure.
And see if, you know, they can, he has some kind of ideas that maybe...
Sure.
Because Rich is new to this right now.
Yes.
So, he just stepped in, was it a month ago? A month and a half ago?
Two weeks ago.
Yeah, he just stepped into the position.
I got it.
So, right, any kind of help we can use?
Free help, we always like.
Dan, I have a question. Of the, you had two people that were hired during the summer, and you're just hiring one now, so that's three people that were hired?
Well, the second one is the one we're waiting for now. But there's additional ones that were, are we found out from Mr. Benedict, that he's already interviewed, other ones?
So there are other people applying? So there is the possibility that we could get more drivers?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? See now, motion for closed session.
Okay, I'm going to read it first.
Yeah, Dan.
Okay. All right. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law of 1975...
Oh, do I have a second?
Oh, what?
Nope.
All right.
You have to read it first.
Yeah, you're going to read it, then you take a motion, okay. Public Law of 1975 permits the exclusion of the public from the meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances present exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Township Edison as follows. One, the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon this herein specified subject matters. Two, the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. We're going to interview superintendent candidates. Three, is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made